Because this meeting will be interpreted, I will be taking longer than usual pauses between sentences. Secondly, it's important for you to know that I will be presenting a PowerPoint with our plans to return on August 28th. I have, once I've finished presenting the plan, you'll be able to ask questions or make comments in the chat box at the bottom of your screen. I will try to answer as many questions as I can, but due to anticipated numbers, I may not be able to do that. So please know that we will be keeping a record of the questions and we'll follow up with unanswered questions in the new frequently asked questions area of our reopening webpage, which is expected to be live by August 7th or sooner. So while the purpose of tonight's meeting is to present our plan to return in person, we must also be cognizant that everything could change depending on what the Washington State Department of Health, OSPI, and/or the Governor's Office may mandate. In the event that we are required to return to school with a 100% virtual format, we will have a plan to do that as well. We've had more time to prepare for an online learning option than we had last spring when the switch was flipped in one day. If our schools are required to open completely online, please be assured that it will be a more robust plan with more accountability, including grading and attendance requirements. Enough of the virtual plans for now. Tonight, our main purpose of this talk is to discuss our current reopening plan draft. So I would like to take a moment to thank everyone who has pitched in with helpful ideas and all of the hours that were spent by many, many people dedicated to bringing our kids back to school safely. Our administrators, tech team, maintenance, and unions have all been instrumental and very supportive in helping to put together a plan for return. Back in June, Superintendent Rakedell told us that it was his intent for schools to return in person in the fall. We were given a 59-page planning guide to follow as we developed our plans to return to school in the fall. Since that time, or since the time we received the document, we made every effort to create an effective plan to return that falls within the mandates included within the guide. This included breaking the guidelines into smaller chunks and committees, gathering input from a variety of groups, and then taking all of this and inputting it into a draft, which I will share with you tonight. As part of this process, we have also been working with officials from Grant County Health. We have provided them with the information regarding our return plans and await their feedback and input as we move forward. Finally, with a minimum of two weeks before the first day of school scheduled for August 28th, we are required to submit our formal plan to OSPI. This would mean that the Royal School Board would have to meet no later than August 13th to approve a final version of our plan through a formal resolution. Please be aware that this Friday evening, July 31st, we will be launching a survey for family members to provide additional input on our plans. Information on how to access this survey will be provided on our webpage and announced through Facebook. As a final note, I would like to express that for a variety of reasons, I believe that the best scenario moving forward is for us to bring our students back to our buildings for live instruction, and our plans reflect that. We won't however be able to bring all kids back every day due to the six-feet distancing requirements, which we must follow in order to be approved by the Department of Health and OSPI. In the draft plan, you will see how we address this. So please bear with me while I share my screen so you can see the PowerPoint that I'm going to use. Okay, so this is again a draft, our draft plan. We continue to take input daily and tweak it based on the input that we get and the information that we receive. And so the final plan will not be in place until the board votes on that on the resolution prior to August 13th. So just wanted to talk briefly about the purpose and non-purpose of this meeting. So our purpose is to review the draft of reopening plans to safely return to school based on mandated guidance and requirements. You may have heard a lot of other rumors about other things that's not related to reopening. That's not the purpose of that for tonight. And so speaking of not the purpose, we also want to avoid discussion of items that are beyond our control, such as opinions related to the mandated requirements. And I would also like you to take a look at our commitments as we work and have been working toward these things. And our first commitment is to lead with safety and wellbeing of students and staff as our first priority. That safety as our first priority is also in our mission statement, and it has always been our first priority. We also are committed to adhering, oh, got ahead of myself a little bit, to the health and safety requirements of the Washington Department of Health, committed to providing all Royal students with high-quality instruction that meets basic education requirements and essential learning standards, provide our staff with the training and support necessary to safely and successfully perform their work, and ensure that any hybrid learning models will safely maximize the amount of face-to-face in-person instruction for all students. We'll be differentiated in our approach by grade band and student need, and we will provide consistency for families. So as many of you may have already heard, there are a series of requirements that we have to satisfy, and the first set is related to health and safety measures. So we will be doing screening and attestations, which means students and staff must attest that they are healthy and free of COVID-19 before entering the building each day. So we are currently looking at different apps which should help facilitate this. At this time, we have not landed on one that will do that, but by having an app of this sort, both parents and staff can answer the questions about assuring that their students don't have symptoms so we know that it's safe for them to come to school. With the number of, if we can get a high number participating in this, this should help avoid bottlenecks at the front door with our live screeners. We will also, as far as hand washing is concerned, have regular reminders to wash hands frequently, and we have placed additional hand sanitizing units throughout the building. Masks and personal protective equipment, commonly known as PPE. All students and staff and visitors must wear face coverings at all times consistent with LNI and Department of Health requirements. Families are asked to provide face coverings for students. The district will have additional disposable face coverings if needed. Cleaning and disinfecting, a more robust and deeper cleaning schedule will be implemented, and physical distancing spaces will be altered to provide six feet of physical distancing. Student transitions with drop-off and pickup, parents will remain in their vehicles when dropping off and picking up. And for our transitions between classes, while in the hallway, students will transition by class and will maintain six feet of distance between themselves and wear face coverings at all times. At Red Rock and the intermediate school, students will transition as a class or grade level. At the middle school, students will have a staggered class dismissal. And at the high school, students will have a staggered class dismissal. And where possible, transition routes will be designed to maximize distancing. When entering and exiting schools, all students will enter and exit each building at a designated set of doors. Moving on to our reopening schedule options. As previously stated, our number-one choice is to try to safely bring back as many as possible as we can. Currently, we're looking at option one for Red Rock K3 to be in school all days. It becomes a little bit more difficult at the intermediate school moving on up. We have a larger sixth-grade class, which makes the six-foot distancing a little bit more difficult. So we're still working on how that will look at the intermediate school. As far as the 50-50 split at the middle school and the high school, students would have an A-B type of schedule. So if I'm an A student, I would go to school, for example, on Monday and Wednesday. If I'm a B student, I go Tuesday and Thursday. But if I'm an A student, again, I'm going to school on Monday physically, but on Tuesday, I am streaming into the class. So I'm still participating four days of the week. And the fifth day, we will be using for interventions and extensions and be bringing in smaller groups of students on the fifth day. Obviously, as I said before, we have to be very sure we're following health and safety measures, which include hand washing, face coverings, six-feet distancing, screening, and attestations. Option number two would be all grades being remote, learning as a 50-50 split. Although the reason why this isn't our option number one is we believe that you go down in the grade levels, it becomes a lot more difficult for remote learning. And option three, which is our last choice, is 100% remote learning. We will also, I have a note on the bottom of the screen that says "remote only option for families." So if you're a family that is concerned about sending your kids to school, we will have an option for them to attend as a remote-only option. Food services, some changes in in-school cafeteria procedures. Typical breakfast and lunchroom services will be adjusted to avoid situations where students are gathered in groups. Seating will include six-feet distancing. Red Rock and intermediate schools, students will be seated and assigned by grade level. At the intermediate school through the high school, students will be encouraged to eat outside weather permitting, of course. Today might be kind of a hard day to eat outside. Out-of-school meal service, just as we did in spring of 2020. School closures, we will ensure students receive meals each weekday, even if the students are not in our buildings. And in the event of a school closure, we will communicate our meal delivery schedule and process. Technology access, as many of you and most of you are aware, we distributed Chromebooks to all of our students last spring, and we have kept them, we have left them with the students over the summer in the event that we were not able to return in person. For new students, we will have Chromebooks available. Students who do not have internet access have been given hotspots. They have been deactivated over the summer, but will be reactivated at the beginning of the school year. Each of our building parking lots have been equipped with available drive-up Wi-Fi signals. And also, there's a map of free drive-up hotspots within the Royal School District boundaries, and it's available on our webpage. Athletics and extracurriculars. Washington schools will follow the guidelines provided by Washington Interscholastic Activities Association, commonly known as WIAA. All Royal School facilities will remain closed to the public until the district's reopening plan is approved by Grant County Health District. Currently, the Royal School District has a number of athletic programs that have created a return-to-play plan that the Grant County Health District has approved, and more athletic programs with return-to-play plans are pending. If you are interested in what's happening with sports, I would strongly encourage you to check out the WIAA website. I did list for you here, I'm not going to read them all, some of the changes. Right now, the higher-contact fall sports, such as football, have been moved to the spring, and those will be in season three. So you can see how that is scheduled at the bottom of this page. It says, "In order for season one to be offered, certain benchmarks must be met. The criteria will be determined and announced by the WIAA Board on July 28th," which is yesterday, and so far, I have not heard any updates from that meeting. Should criteria not be met, season one sports will be moved to season three. Transportation, so for transportation, face coverings will be required. Physical distancing, OSPI has designated busing as an exception to the six-foot physical distancing rule, so long as the district exercises proper cleaning, maximum ventilation when reasonable, face coverings on students and adults, and proper PPE for our bus drivers. Students will sanitize their hands when boarding the bus and will be assigned seats by household. Students living within the city limits will either walk or be driven to school by parents and guardians, which reduces the number of students on buses sitting close or next to each other. And safe walking routes for students have been established through cooperation with the fire district, Royal City Police, and city officials, and they have promised their help for the beginning of school to make the walking routes, to help make the walking route safe for kids as they walk to school. And so with that, that is our plan in a nutshell. As I had stated earlier, this is a draft. We will continue to gain input. We will be sending families a survey this Friday, so we would encourage you to participate so we can take in your comments into consideration as we move forward. Again, as I said earlier, I will entertain questions, and I'm having those pass to me right now. And the first question is in Spanish, so I'm going to answer it in Spanish, and then I'll translate it. It says, "Los buses van a recoger." And so the question is if the buses are going to pick up the students. El plan para los autobuses otra vez es si los estudiantes viven dentro de la ciudad o van a caminar, o sus padres pueden llevarlos para las escuelas. Eso reduce el número de estudiantes que andan en los autobuses y crea más espacio. Cuando todo eso termine, nosotros tenemos planes de continuar con traer los niños a las escuelas con autobús, pero por los momentos, los estudiantes que viven dentro de la ciudad tendrán que venir a la escuela o caminando o llevado por sus padres o tutores. So that question again, are the buses going to pick up students? And as I said in my, as I laid out the plan, students from town and the city limits will either walk or be transported by parents or guardians. And we have plans, walking routes designed for that. It's not our intention for this to be a permanent change, and we are hoping when this all gets better, I can't think of a better way to say it, then we would be able to return to transporting students to buildings. So the next question is, what are the current thoughts on how to split kids in groups A or B? So the, so again, as I spoke before, by doing an A-B plan, it reduces the number of students in the classrooms, which allows for us to create the six-feet of distancing space. At the middle school and the high school, the students would actually be attending on the days that they're not physically in school. So those are the thoughts on that. I'm going to have Linda Achondo, who is our executive director of Teacher and Student Services, kind of add to that. She may have some additional information that she'd like to share at this time.
Good evening, everyone. As far as the A-B schedule, we will be looking at keeping families together, and we will be doing our best to figure out where those loads are across the district, which, as you can imagine, it's a little tricky to make those balance out in each building. So we have been working with our technology director, who's been taking our enrollment, and trying to balance those numbers out so that we end up with close to half on one day and close to half on another day. And hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, so it's back to me. I'm seeing something different on my screen, but can you see me okay? Okay, so I'll continue. Next question is in Spanish. ¿Cuándo van a empezar las clases? When are classes going to begin? With these plans, classes will begin on August 28th. Con los planes que acabos de presentar, pensamos comenzar las clases o empezar las clases el 28 de agosto. Next question is, are the buses going to apply the six-feet-apart rule? So it would be impossible for us to transport all the students with the application of the six-feet-apart rule. As I stated earlier, OSPI has made an exception on that and will allow us to bring the students together closer than a six-feet distance. There are certain plans, like I said, with having family groups together. The first students getting on the bus would get on near the back, second near the front, and we would stagger them that way, which would keep them apart for a little while longer. And again, remember, this is a draft plan, and we still have a while to get our nitty-gritty details done. So it's very possible that people will have questions where we haven't gotten down to that nitty-gritty of an approach yet. But I'll do my best to answer these, and we will also have a frequently asked questions page on our website. This one says, "If a child is in a household, will they be assigned their own seat?" And that would depend on the availability of being able to assign somebody their own seat on a bus. Are face shields acceptable? Will the district supply? So face shields are acceptable for students, and the district will supply. We're encouraging families to supply their own masks and shields, but if they're unable, we do have disposable masks, but not shields. Linda, can you do the recess one? "How will you assure that all families have access to the survey?" So we will send out on Facebook a link to the survey, and we will also have it on our webpage, and we will direct people to go there to fill out the survey. Next question, "Can one-hour late start be moved to Friday to not have so many disruptions?" That will be on the table, and we can discuss that. There hasn't been a firm decision made on when the late starts happen at this point. If we go to the option three, what will be a grading scale? That's a great question, because there was a lot of concerns about grading last year and how we were mandated to do our grades. So what I will say is grades will count, and we are planning right now to have our grades be standard as they were before COVID-19 began. Will the first two options be explained in more depth before the survey is sent out? If you go to our webpage, you will see descriptions of that. Again, we have been, we're still continuing to work on the details, so it may be difficult to go a lot more in-depth, but I think it could help you if you go on our webpage and see what we have there as you answer the questions. So someone is asking this in Spanish about the middle school. If I understand this right, if everybody will go? So the middle school right now, and our first option, is again an A-B type of schedule. So we would have half of the students in the A days and half the students in on the B days, but not everybody at once. So I'll answer that in Spanish. Si, en la escuela, el, el middle school, van a ir todos. Vamos a dividir los estudiantes en la mitad un día y la mitad el otro día. Are you ready for this? Are you going to keep going? What about the plan for first-time kindergarteners? Yeah, okay. For A-B schedule, what about students that play sports? So again, we will follow the guidelines for sports from WIAA. And so if we're operating and sports are going, then we will allow students to participate in sports as the guidelines are given out to us. The next question is in Spanish. ¿Cuántas horas por día las clases? How many hours a day for classes? We are right now planning on having a very similar schedule with ours. ¿Cuántas horas por día las clases? Por ahora estamos, nuestros planes son para tener horarios muy similares a lo que estamos haciendo ahora. Will there be transportation for students that live out of town? And that is an easy one, yes. Which grades are going all day? For right now, we know we have enough space for K3. There is a possibility for four and five, but from grade six and beyond, it becomes much difficult, more difficult to bring everybody in, to bring everybody in and follow the six-feet rule. The next one says in Spanish, "El número de estudiantes por clase va a ser el mismo." Will the number of students per class be the same? So if I understand this question correctly, the same number of students will be assigned to the same number of teachers as we have done in the past. So I don't anticipate that being any different. Otra vez, el número de estudiantes por la clase va a ser el mismo. Anticipamos tener el mismo número de estudiantes con el mismo número de profesores. Eso va a ser muy parecido al pasado. Next one, "When will the plan be finalized and shared with the community?" So the official finalized plan will be finalized no later than August 13th, because we have to submit it to, we have to submit it to OSPI on August 14th. But we are trying to share this information now so you can see what it is starting to look like and how it is starting to take place. And we'll also continue to update our draft plans so people can be aware the whole time what we're thinking of and how we're planning on moving forward. what we're thinking of and how we're planning on moving forward. Will the kids have more time with their teachers if we go all online? So so once again, as I was talking about, the purpose of tonight is to talk about our reopening plans and how we're coming back. So so there will be a lot of details that we will still have to figure out if we do go all online. But this will be much more robust than what you saw in the spring. Are there going to be any helpers for bus drivers to monitor kids keeping masks on? We have talked about additional help in various areas as far as screeners and also crossing guards to help with the routes safely to school. And specifically on the bus, we've not had that conversation, but that's a good comment and it's something that we will certainly consider. So this one in Spanish. Tengo una pregunta acerca de los útiles escolares. So this says, I have a question about school supplies. Although I don't see what the question is. We would expect each person to have their individual supplies because sharing could become problematic. Otra vez en español, tengo una pregunta acerca de los útiles escolares. Los estudiantes tendrán su propio juego de útiles porque compartirlos podría ser problemático. What happens if we have a positive case? So we are currently working with Grant County Health to finalize how that looks. They are creating a flow chart. And if one of the discussions, depending on the number of students and it was determined how many people were wearing masks and so forth, it could be very different. But if we have if we have enough positive cases, then we would have to convert to online learning, but we're still working out the details of that. How long will it take Grant County to approve the plan that is submitted? So I have shared information with Grant County right now. And so they're having, they do have documents with them to look over, similar to what I've shared with you this evening. And they also know what our timeline is and when we need to have our board approve the plan. So it will be sometime between now and August 14th, but I don't have a date for that. What would the schedule look like for life skills and special education children since they may not be able to benefit from online learning? That that one is still in the works, so I don't have an answer for that right now. I have another, a couple of other questions regarding kindergarten. What is the plan for first time kindergarteners? Will parents be able to walk them to school? We have not had a discussion on that detail, but I will get the answer and we'll post that on our questions and answers. The other question about will there be open house for kinder students before school starts? We will find some way to do an orientation and that orientation will need to follow the guidelines laid out to us by the health department. How do we know what group our kids will be in? The schools will contact the families and let them know that just as they let them know what their schedules will be or any other information that is similar. Is the middle school and high school schedule the same? They will be similar as to the A and B students will be the same and the the fifth day of the week, intervention day will be the same day. As the teachers' union approved this plan, I heard REA is willing to open, but WA may have a different opinion. I want to say that that I'm very grateful with both our unions, REA and PSC. They've been extremely cooperative with us and the feeling and the sentiment that we're getting with working through that with them is that they want to come back as well. We've done, we did an employee poll and we did an employee poll and a majority of our staff wants to return. How will Fridays work for students needing enrichment or intervention if teachers are also providing remote learning? So I'm going to have, I'm going to have Linda Chando answer that question.
As Mr. Trail said, we are still figuring all of this out right now. Our thoughts are that the way that would look is the students who are not in the building on Fridays would be completing assignments that were already assigned, would not be live with teachers. That's our tentative thoughts, but principals, we will be working with staff to really get into the nitty gritty and the fine details over the next few weeks for each of our options so that we're prepared no matter which option we are allowed to do. And while I'd like to address recess, that has come up several different times. Again, we are working through the nitty gritty. We know that kids are going to need recess. We are hoping that they will be able to take a little break from their masks at that time while being socially distanced. Obviously, that's going to take more supervision. Cohorts will have to stay the same together and be able to mix. When we did with our grant county health, a sort of assigned administrator, she talked about working with kids to play more non-touch games. So we we will work with our teachers. We have had a teacher send us some different ideas and principals will be working with their teachers to figure out good plans for this. But again, as a mom of a five-year-old, we, I know that recess is important and we will be planning to have recess in some way, shape or form during the school year and when kids are on campus.
Another question in Spanish. Okay, I apologize, I was muted, so I will start again. So this one's in Spanish. It says, entonces las clases comienzan el 28 de agosto con sus medidas correspondientes. So classes start the 28th of August with their corresponding majors. That is what our plan is right now. And so that is a yes. Para contestar esa pregunta en español. Las clases según el modelo que tenemos ahora que estamos presentando es para regresar a las clases el 28 de agosto. Entonces la respuesta es sí. This one says, on Fridays, will students alternate between A and B scheduled to avoid mixing and reduce COVID exposure? So it has not been determined at this point which day will be the intervention day, but if it if it is on Fridays, there will be fewer students in the school on those days to help reduce the numbers of COVID exposure. There's a question that says, are in-person five days a week off the table? Currently with the rules that are in place, because of the six feet distancing, they are. If if those rules were to change and we have the ability to bring back in-person school five days a week, we definitely will do that. But right now, the rules do not permit us to do that. This one is in Spanish. ¿El A y B de la escuela va a tomar la decisión? So the A and B is the school going to make the decision. La respuesta en español, si, nosotros vamos a tomar los números de estudiantes y dividirlo, dividirlo alfabeticamente para que sea más posible que que los niños vengan en grupos de familia. So when we make the decision for A and B students, we will group those alphabetically, which then will help us with grouping students by family. Okay, this one says, will students be required to wear masks during PE? Will there be PE? There are several things that we will need to consider with PE. If it's outdoors and so forth, this gets to be in a little bit more detail than we have discussed this time. But when we are able to answer that question, we will. This question says, is there a threshold of positive cases to push the schools to remote learning? Or is it one case and we will move to remote learning? From my understanding, one case is not enough to remove, to move to remote learning. It would have to be more than one case, but we will base our decision in cooperation with Grant County Health. So this one says, entonces ustedes nos van a mandar una página de lo que vamos a necesitar. So you're going to send us a page of what we are going to need. Si, vamos a mandar información a las familias con todos los materiales que van a necesitar como todos los años. So yes, we will be communicating with families to let them know what supplies need to be brought. Do we know anything about CB Tech? At this point, I have not communicated with CB Tech. If we hear anything, we will let you know. Who will be taking the temperature of kids before they enter the building? Will you check the temperature of the kids? Yes, checking the temperature of the kids is one of our requirements. Part of that will be handled through the attestation app, which I have discussed earlier on. If those have not been completed, we will have staff members at the designated entrances taking temperature because that is a requirement for our return. This one says, will K3 go in person to school or the intervention day? Our current plan is for all of our K3 kids to come back every day. If kids use face shields, do they have to wear masks under the face shields? No, they do not. When will middle school students have their schedules? We will share those when we have them made. They're not made right now and they they will be delivered with it in enough time so people will be able to prepare for the return to school. This one says, if my child is on an A-B schedule, would they be in school one day and the next watching a screen from eight to three? So if if a student is on an A schedule, they're they're at the school physically on their A day and B, on B day, they would participate. But they, but the first part would be more of the instructional part and then the second part would be work time. And so they wouldn't have to be, they wouldn't have to be like focused on the screen those solid number of hours. For grades, kinder and first, does attendance affect grade or moving on to the next year? Well, we haven't discussed that. My my thoughts on this are that the students would continue to the next year. I mean, obviously, they need to be participating and being prepared, getting prepared for the next year. This one says, the 28th of August is a Friday is a plan to have the first day of school online for most kids. So this plan that I have presented brings students to school on an A-B schedule at the upper levels, K3, every day. So it would only be online at this point if if the rules change and we are mandated to go online. So I'm trying to see if I can make sense of this question. It says, what are the plans if they go A-B when they're not going to attend school? So so I suppose if if they were to miss and couldn't attend, then they would need to contact the school's office to talk about absences, just like is currently done. Can plans change after the first season? So when seasons mentioned, I'm thinking a sports season. Again, that is up to WIAA and we're following those guidelines for for the seasons. I can say that it's going to be awful odd watching football in the spring, but I'm glad, at least for now, that the plans are for that to happen as well as other sports. What is the first day for kinder? It's usually a week after the first day of school. So it would be a week after the 28th. If anything were to change on that, we will let you know. Here's a good one. It says, ¿qué puedo hacer para que mis hijos estudién desde casa? What can I do to help my students if they have to study from home in the event? In that event, we will, we will be working on tutorials that we will have online and other plans to to provide orientation for parents on how to help their students. So this one says, for middle school and high school students, are they expected to log into live classes from eight to three? Or will it be more pre-recorded material and will they do that on their own time? There will probably be a little bit of both, but we are looking for more of the the live feeds than we have done in the past. This one says, is K3 expected to be in school five days a week? And 412 is only four days a week. So so yes, K3 would be five days a week. For four through 12, we're still determining. we're still determining grades four and five based on numbers. So I would say six through 12 would be more of a students being two days a week in-person, two days a week online and then the fifth day is extra extension time and intervention time. Will special needs students and siblings have the remote learning option? We are looking at ways to reach all of our students and we are also looking at ways to provide remote learning options for students who are unable to come physically. This one says if you're trying to divide families by last name, what happens to the family that has different last names? Yeah, we have discussed that. We will do our best to try to keep families together as much as we can and if we're aware of those things, we'll do our best to adjust. Will bus drivers be required to take the temperature of students before they load at bus stops? Currently, we do not have plans for bus drivers taking the temperature before they load at bus stops. And our plans would be for the attestations to be taken care of, whether they're done on a physical piece of paper or whether they are done through the app that we are exploring. What about students that were in the class of a person that tested positive? Will the other student staff have to quarantine? And that answer is most likely yes. I have a question in Spanish about registering children for preschool and because that is Linda Chando's area, I'm going to have her answer that question.
Good evening again. If you need to register a preschool student, you can call the district office and we will put you in touch with the preschool director and we will mail you the, sorry, the registration packets. Right now, our registrar is not at school and we are trying to avoid as many people as possible on campus. So that will be the way to do that. So you would call the district office and the number is 346-2222 and we can put you in touch with Maria Rodriguez, who is our preschool director. Thank you.
The next question is do parents have the option to choose 100% remote learning for their family? And the answer to that is yes. This question says some schools are just using computers. Can the virus spread by students using school supplies? So, some of the things that I have read recently is that the virus does not spread as readily through contact items. However, we will be continuing to clean and make sure that school supplies are not shared. This question says with the A/B scheduling, students will only be in school eight days per month. Will they be going longer next year? That is not something that we have discussed at this point. I don't anticipate a longer school year next year at this point. If your kid is sick on their day to physically attend, can they log into the virtual feed for the day? Absolutely. Okay, are there any more questions or? Okay. Yeah, pardon me, I'm just gonna mute myself just for a few seconds. So, we are down to just a few minutes left. And I, there are several questions that, that as I stated earlier, I was anticipating a lot of questions, so we won't have time to answer those this evening. However, we will do our best to get those on our question and answer page and we'll also have a chance to, we will also have a chance to kind of compile them. A lot of these questions are, are similar questions, so we wouldn't have to continually answer the same question over and over again. But in closing, again, please know that we understand that there's no substitution for, for in-person learning. And so that's why we're trying everything we can to make that happen. We know that our staff miss their students and we want to be back with our students here. It's, it's not very fun to come to work during the school year and look at the, at the playgrounds and see that they're empty. We want to bring our kids back. We miss them and we're doing everything that we, we can that is possible within everything that has been handed down to us. So we will continue to post updates about any new guidance on our website and we'll, we'll also use other forms of communication as needed, which can include Facebook, our webpage. And on occasion, we also will use our, our robocalls to, to get out more type of critical and timely messages. And again, thank you so much for, for your, your input, your questions. We want to do what's best for kids. We're working hard to try to make that happen. And I, I just would like to say one last final word of, of the appreciation that I have for the Royal School District and the community members. I have received so many texts and emails of encouraging words. Obviously, this is, this is a very difficult time when, when there are so many questions up in the air. We're doing our best to answer those and to, to provide the best education that we can for our students given the circumstances. So again, thank you for attending. Please follow our Facebook and our webpage for any updates. Good evening.